Good evening, I'm Dennis Martin. A call to order, the Euclid Township Planning Committee meeting for July 8, 2020. This is recorded. Also, after our presentation will be a time for public comment. Please do not hold your calls till after the presentation is complete. Tonight, we are having present the Hankin Group, the Eagleview Town Center Apartments. And I believe Neil Fisher will be presenting.
The videos helps them with visualizations of things like a cell or atoms.
Guys, how is everybody tonight? Tara, do you want me to pull up on the screen, share my screen? The land development plan?
I have it on the screen right now.
This is the parking plan, this will work.
I have the parking plan also.
The parking plan is what I see on the screen, but this is, this is fine.
Really? Hold on.
Yeah, that's what I see.
One second, I thought I had it all figured out here.
Just a quick reminder to everybody in the room, if you could mute yourself when not speaking, that would be greatly appreciated, just to cut down on the background noise here.
How do I mute myself then?
If you move your cursor to the bottom of the screen, the mute button pops up.
Your bottom left, you can just click on the microphone.
Bottom left, you say?
If you move your cursor to the bottom of the screen.
Oh yeah, I got it. Maybe it's the top of your screen, I'm on an iPad.
So you want me to mute myself right now?
No, you can stay unmuted. There we go.
You want to see somebody?
You're gonna leave it on main speaker.
I think Tara, are you still trying to pull that up?
Yeah, it's up, can you not see it?
No.
Tara, go to share screen and just make sure you have the right thing selected for, because it only shares one thing at a time.
Are we good?
Yep.
Alright.
Okay. Alright, so just, I'm gonna, I'll take a step back and just kind of refresh everybody's memory. I believe it was January, came in through the conditional use process to modify the town center plans. So just to orient everybody, Rice Boulevard runs across the top of the screen. Wharton Boulevard runs in the north-south direction, yep. And then town center consists of three lots, it's the live-work units and the large portion that basically extends Boulevard up to Rice Boulevard and over to Pennsylvania Drive. And that's where we have Meridian, ACAC, retail buildings, and Wellington. And when we came in for conditional use, what we wanted to do was a couple of things. One, we were proposing a 44-unit apartment building, basically to replace a 30,000-square-foot office building on the western side of the square. So, Tara, if you could put your cursor and just highlight the area where the 44-unit building would be. And basically, what the design, what the intent has always been with the town center was to have buildings flank the square on all four sides. So this is, this is finalizing or completing the, the plan for the square. Another part of the conditional use was to modify the expansion area for ACAC. It was previously 20,000 square feet, and with the conditional use, we reduced that down to 10,000 square feet and added some outdoor recreation area. The, so as part of the conditional use process, we said, hey, we're gonna do this in stages. And the first stage is to, first, and it could be separated into separate land development plans. The first project being the apartments on the square and completing that fourth leg of the square. So we've gone through the review process or the land development process. We have review letters from all township consultants. And I would say, when you, if you've had an opportunity to take a look at the review letters, they're extremely clean. I believe we have a lighting comment, but that's, that's about it. So, I'm happy to go through, we can go through each of the review letters if you want to talk about specific comments or questions about the plan. This is basically the same plan that we looked at in January with the conditional use, with all the details ironed out for land development. Does the planning commission have any, any comments or questions for me?
There's been some questions, Neil, about the parking. So can you review some of that for us?
Sure. So, let's start off with what exists today. And Tara, can you go to the next slide? Plan set? And then go to the next one? Okay. So what exists today is you have parking that's located over on the western side of Wellington Square, where Tara has that. You have an access driveway that extends past the Brickside Suburban and up to, up to Wharton Boulevard. And then you have, what I'll call is this, a circuitous route to get to the upper level of parking beyond the suburban there, okay? So, what's, what you see in gray there is actually that all is, this is part of the demolition plan. That all gets removed, modified. So, and so if we can slide back to one, this one right here. Here, you can see how the site plan gets modified. So the building has parking underneath the building. So there is an excess of one space per unit within the building. The access is right where, the access driveway is right where the cursor is. And then up against the square, that area has been modified. So whereas previously it was parallel spaces up against the square, now it's head-in spaces and then also head-in spaces up against the building. Then the, the path going up to the upper levels has been modified so that it is, it is a a much cleaner path to get from the lower level of parking to the upper level. And it's all graded at about 4.5%. It's a very nice parking grade going up from the lower level to that upper level. And actually, so what it does is it realigns the, the intersection there onto Wharton Boulevard. And like I said, it just makes that, what used to be a circuitous route, really a very seamless path from lower to upper level. It also gives us more area adjacent to suburban for some outdoor amenities space associated with suburban. So that's something that, that's a benefit of, to suburban as part of this project. And if you think about it, this is actually almost identical to what exists in front of Wellington, the condominium building. Whereas, I don't know, okay. You can't see the, however. Underneath the, underneath of Wellington, we have parking, also a minimum of one space per unit underneath of that building. And then in front of Wellington, we have park, one row of parking adjacent to the square. So what we're doing is really mirroring the same thing that exists on the east side of the square over to the west side of the square. Does that answer your question?
So for this, for the Wellington Square, is that one parking, reserved parking per unit, correct?
Under, inside the building, yes.
Yep, okay.
You are correct.
Neil?
Yes.
It looked to me on the other parking diagram that the spots along Wharton Boulevard were also being reserved for this apartment complex.
Now, so the, the plan that was initially up when the parking plan, the parking allocation plan, so that's more of a, that's a zoning plan. Meaning that zoning requires so many parking spaces per, per use. And they get, they can be distributed amongst or throughout the, the overall town center. And those spaces along Wharton Boulevard do calculate towards that overall parking density, or parking tally. What, as part of this, when we went through the conditional use process, one of the comments was raised, and it was a good comment, was to make sure that the, you know, retail associated with the live-work units and, you know, should that be restricted to whether hour or two-hour parking? So as part of the land development plans and under, you know, through the review process with the traffic consultant, it was agreed that they, they will be marked and identified for two-hour parking. And really what that does is people who are going to a retail use will go and utilize those spaces. If you are going to park your car overnight, you're not going to utilize a, a two-hour parking space. You're gonna park elsewhere. So it's, it really is geared towards making sure spaces are available for that retail use and not for residential use.
Okay.
If you look at this.
Hey, did it look like it was being designed for the apartments itself, so I don't think that's what that.
No, that's, that's not the intent. And if you look at this plan, you can see that there, there's parking spaces, there's parallel spaces, they're shaded. And if, if, if you zoom in, there's signage associated with those spaces that designates those for two-hour parking.
Okay.
That's, that's what the, I don't know if you can read it, but that's what the wording says there, spaces designated with two-hour, two-hour parking. I'd say, you know, while we're, while we're looking at the plan a little bit closer here, one of the things that, that we did was to make sure that the connection, pedestrian connection along Wharton Boulevard gets completed. So you can see the sidewalks that are extending from, from Gramercy on the east side all the way up and connecting into the sidewalk there at the, the future recreation. And all the crosswalks and the striping and ADA ramps associated with that.
Can you go over the ingress and egress into the garage area? I think we had some problems with that before.
Sure. Tara, can you just pan to the left just a little bit?
To the left?
Or actually, you know what, it's fine, it's, I just have to move my.
Yeah, everybody.
Okay, alright, so what exists today is, so you see how Wharton Boulevard bends, bent, has that bend, that curve in it? As you, as you're traveling north, now, north is, is actually to the left on this plate, on this plan. But as you're traveling to the left into town center along Wharton, it has a curve. And then, so where Tara has the, the cursor, that was designed with a, a sweep into the town center. And it's, it was, it was intended to make that, just to make that turning movement and where, where you see the stop sign on that. Yes, thank you. That today is a yield, so people would, would roll through there and never have to stop. So, what, one of the comments during the, I believe it was, it was during the conditional use process was, hey, that this intersection should be looked at. And what the recommendation was, was to convert that yield sign to a stop sign so that people coming in will have to stop before entering into the town center. And if you look where the cursor, that is also where the, the driveway access to the parking garage underneath of the 44-unit apartment building is. And we designed it to ensure that there is adequate space off of the drive aisle for vehicles to, to park prior to exiting the garage.
One other question I had was, it was, it looked, it appears you're putting a public bathroom in here somewhere?
Yes, okay. So today, what we have in town, you know, because there's, we have a lot of events in town. Now, not this year because of COVID and things have been pretty quiet as far as from an event standpoint. But typically with the concerts and with movie nights and farmers market, we have, we have portable toilets that are, are out in town center today pretty close to being year-round. And we'd like to get rid of those. So we did design into this building a men's and women's bathroom. And it would only be, it would not have access from the inside, it would only have access to the exterior of the building. And it would only be open during our events. So it's not, it's not, it's not a public bathroom that would be open just on a, on a random Tuesday afternoon. Our, you know, our, our town center staff would go over and open it up for those events.
Neil, this is Rich Jordan. The Dean Kaiser didn't find any issues with the parking available for this, this development, did he?
No, he did not.
It seems to be pretty clean.
It is, and actually, I believe he says that we've addressed all of his comments.
He does. There was a comment that we, or some confusion about dedicated spaces from, for the Claremont Apartments. Can you, could you identify where those would, are, if you recall?
Sure. So there's, there's, I believe you're talking about parking easement.
Parking easement, right.
Yes.
Yeah.
So when we went through and we did place bank financing or our permanent financing on the 72 units located on, you know, on the south side here. We placed a, a parking easement and it was associated with our limited common element for the 100 parking spaces that are located behind those two buildings. So it is those parking spaces, and I believe it's like six or seven that extend up the driveway between just, yep, right there, those spaces between Claremont and Wellington. So that's an easement that is really, quite frankly, between two Hankin entities that we placed on there for our, our financing.
So there's nothing to do with this property?
No.
And this has always been, been identified as something that they were gonna put a building on?
It is, you are correct.
Okay.
Yes, prior to this, it was a 30,000-square-foot office building.
Does anyone else have any comments or questions we'd like to present to Neil?
Danny, Neil, who maintains the bathrooms? Charlie here.
Ah, hi Charlie, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? At this time, should we open this up to the public? This is a reminder, this is being recorded. And if you have a comment or question, please state your name and your address for the records. And you're, we're limiting to one comment?
Yeah, just for clarity, we're gonna limit it to one time at the microphone or one time. You don't just get to say one thing, but we don't wanna get into a situation where we're doing a round-robin type of situation.
And also, I know everybody's muted, so if you would like to make a comment and you're still, you know, figuring out how to unmute yourself, please just use the group chat and we'll, I'll try and work to unmute you as well.
Hi, this is Doug Simpson at 605 Portland Drive in Eagleview. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Fisher, my question comes to the current situation in front of El Pastor, Suburban and Brickside. You've currently removed 24 spaces, I counted today to be sure, for outdoor dining. What is the long-term plan for this in regards to the, I guess, whether this may become permanent or will be removed? Obviously, that street is currently blocked, there's no traffic going through there. And how long would this, you know, this is a temporary situation, it's a long-term situation? If we have a second flare-up and the restaurants are not able to have indoor seating, would this be reestablished and at that point, does that impact the amount of parking availability?
Sure. So I'm certainly hopeful that this is a, a temporary situation. I hope that, you know, the whole COVID crisis is, is resolved soon and restaurants are able to function as normal. We did, we made a request into the township to temporarily close those, those spaces off in order to try and accommodate the the phasing, meaning that the governor's phasing as far as going from red to yellow to green and giving the, the restaurants the, the ability to open and utilize that outdoor space. And so, I would say that right now, our, our hope is, is that everything here is temporary and certainly the, the township has the ability to require that to be opened back up again. And one of the conditions that was also placed on the approval of utilizing this temporary parking with the township is that we can't have, we can't do both. Meaning, we can't be under construction and, and take away parking and also take away parking in front of the restaurants. So we would be, we would be forced to make a decision as far as timing, as far as when we would open that road back up and, and place the project under construction. So I hope that answers your question. I wish I had a more solidified question, but I think as we all figure out crisis, it's, it's something that's going to, I think, bounce back and forth until there's, until a vaccine is actually found.
Would construction begin as the outdoor seating is currently available? Would you, I guess the question is, so you would, so you would delay construction until at least they're able to regain indoor dining?
Well, it'd be one of the two. I will either begin construction and, and remove the outdoor dining that closes down the parking where I will delay the construction and keep the outdoor dining.
That's not gonna depend on the governor's coding, green, normal, yellow, red? It's, that's not gonna impact whether you remove the dining?
If, if there is indoor dining, then the outdoor dining within the parking lot is not necessary.
Right, I guess my point though is if they are, if we're still in the, I guess it's the green stage or yellow, let's go with yellow. So if we're in the yellow stage, you would not delay construction, you would essentially remove the outdoor dining.
No, what I'm saying is that's, what I'm saying is that's a choice that we will have to make.
Okay, and that's, that's a choice, you have not determined what you will do at that, at this point?
That's correct.
Alright.
Any other comments from the public?
Mr. O'Keefe is raising his hand, but he's, he's muted.
Okay, y'all hear me okay?
We can.
Thanks, okay. I'm here on behalf of Joe Moran. As you know, Joe has appeared before the Board of Supervisors for the Conditional Use Hearing. And I know he's been involved in this decision-making process. And as I'm sure you're all aware, I prepared a written submission on Joe's behalf to discuss some of the concerns that we have. And I'm certainly not going to reiterate everything I've written down. I, I trust that you all have at least glanced at the submission that I made. My concern is one that I think the township has shared over the last decade or so. And that is the accessibility of parking for the development that is now known as, as the Claremont Apartments. Back in 2007, when the Board of Supervisors granted a conditional use application, they were very clear that the parking for that development that was then proposed to go into Claremont should be walking distance away. And then in 2011, when Claremont ultimately was approved, they were very clear, the Board of Supervisors was, that A, that they did not grant a reduction in parking because they expressly stated they were concerned about the effect additional residential development would have on, on parking. And because of that, they denied the request for reduction in parking. And they expressly said that 40 of the spots that were to be allocated for Claremont were to be directly across the street in the location that was to be known as Future Building E, which I understand to be, right, the, the area where the, the new proposed apartments on the square are going. I'm surprised, and maybe I was mistaken to hear that there was a easement agreement for 40 spots in a completely separate location. And maybe that was, was my misinterpretation. Which seems like, like an odd coincidence that you'd have 40 spots specifically set aside for the Future Building E. And then you'd have a parking easement specifically for 40 spaces for the Claremont buildings. But that, that might have been my misinterpretation. But what we get down to is a proposal that is building directly on top of a parking lot that expressly was reserved for those Claremont spaces. And I think we're now at a point where the concern that was repeatedly expressed by the township may be being cast aside. And I can certainly appreciate that Mr. Fisher has come in and he's received conditional use approval for the construction of a 44-unit apartment complex that he received conditional use approval for the reduction in spaces required. And I'm not disputing that was the approval, it was granted. My, my dispute on behalf of Mr. Moran is that by putting anything on top of those originally 40 allocated spots seriously impairs the parking that was otherwise cautiously reserved by the board for those Claremont residents. But you're not only now at this point putting any additional development over that parking spot, but you're adding 44 additional units on top of parking that was previously reserved for Claremont. And I understand that the parking plan that was color-coded, that was submitted at the conditional use hearing doesn't necessarily spell out where designated spots. doesn't necessarily spell out where designated spots are supposed to go in reality. But if you look at that parking plan, the spots that otherwise were supposed to be there for the Claremont residents in the proposed location of the new apartments have been shifted over several hundred feet away to the Wellington Apartments, as I understand the parking plan. But now you're displacing those spots and forcing people to walk the equivalent of a couple football fields, could be elderly people, could be folks with groceries, whereby when they bought those apartment units in Claremont, they thought they were assured parking either immediately surrounding those apartments or in the lot right across the street, as required by the conditional use approval. And I think the problem with now proposing to build on top of that parking space is that it runs afoul of the Township zoning ordinance, specifically 607.2 C and D. 607.2 C says, "No parking area shall be used for any use that interferes with its availability for the parking need it is required to serve", which is clearly what's going on here, that parking spot, that parking lot was designated for those Claremont residents, and now it's being proposed for an entirely new residential use. And 607.2 D says, "All required parking facilities shall be provided and maintained so long as the use exists, which facilities were designed to serve." Clearly, the Claremont Apartments still exist. And clearly, that parking is still required by those Claremont residents. So by constructing a brand-new residential complex on top of that parking lot, you're no longer providing and maintaining that parking for a use that very much still exists. And I understand that Hankin went in and got conditional use approval. But I think in order to comply with these specific provisions, at least with the plan as proposed, you would have to get variance relief from those. But I don't believe Hankin has done it this. I understand that a lot of thought has gone into this, and I understand that a lot of consultants have looked at this. And I'm not, and I don't think Mr. Moran is trying to make things overly difficult, but the concern that he has and that I have on his behalf is not the construction of new residential units, but the location, given the fact that this was a critical component of the parking that has previously been contemplated by the board and the Planning Commission in years past. So I think, at least from a legal perspective, that without getting variance relief from those provisions, I'm not sure how this plan complies with the zoning ordinance. And I would find it difficult for the Planning Commission to recommend approval in light of that.
Mr. Freed, do you have any comments on that?
I
I can address it as well.
Whoever.
And so can Neil.
I'm happy to take the first shot if you.
I mean, I'll just say, I have a lot of comments. I mean, I don't want to have to, you know, defend the applicant. I'm here on behalf of the Planning Commission, which is trying to make an even-handed, unbiased determination on this. I think some of the statements Mr. O'Keefe made, and just for clarity of the record, are inaccurate. But if there's stuff left over, I would prefer for, you know, Hankin's representative and/or the zoning officer to speak. And then if something else needs to be said, I'll jump in.
Sure. Why don't I go? Okay. First, I think from a planning perspective, if there was a last thing that Hankin wants is a parking problem. If there's a parking problem, then with the function of the Town Center, and the Town Center is a huge investment for us as a company. So I will tell you that we have studied parking and studied parking and studied parking some more to make sure that we are not going to create something that will cause a problem for us. So I'll start off with that, and then then let's jump into the Mr. O'Keefe's comment regarding, you know, that these spaces were solely designated for Claremont. And that obviously cannot be the case, because where this building was previously proposed is a 30,000-square-foot office building. 30,000-square-foot office building will also utilize basically the same amount of parking as will a 44-unit residential building. And with this building, yes, we are picking up and relocating some of the parking spaces, but we are also adding one parking space, minimum of one parking space per unit on the building. So in fact, if you look at the amount of parking with this plan versus the office plan, there's more parking in this area for the use than there was previously for an office building, like 30,000-square-foot office building. So we are in fact improving the parking situation in and around this area as it gets built. I think there was a, trying to think of what the, so regarding the zoning comments, the lot is the lot lot 21, and it extends, yes, that is the boundary. And really, what the zoning ordinance says is that your buildings need to provide parking on that lot. We are providing and meeting the zoning ordinance as it relates to parking. For all the uses, we are permitted to have multiple uses on that lot and in this property. And this, you know, we meet the zoning ordinance from a parking standpoint. We make it meet it and exceed it from a practical standpoint, meaning that we study our parking out here constantly to make sure, like I said previously, you know, to document the sharing that actually occurs. And if you look at that parking study that was done, that we prepared, we have approximately 1,200 parking spaces out there. And during the peak hour, we park at about, I think it was about 650 spaces. That doesn't mean during a concert or during events, you know, that's normal business operations. And that takes into account all the cars that are parked in the garages and all the garage parking spaces. So, yes, I totally disagree with Mr. O'Keefe. And I think when you look at the township review letters from your consultants that have been interpreting your ordinances for numerous years. And when I come in, come to the Planning Commission with a clean review letter, I think that also documents that the zoning ordinance is in compliance with this plan.
It's backwards. The plans in compliance with the zoning.
Yes, sir. Yes, thank you. Yes, the plan. No, doesn't the ordinance comply with my plan? Kidding. No, yes, that the plans are in.
On that same point, can you give it again?
I'm, what?
I asked Tyra to give an answer. I had asked her the same question this afternoon.
So yeah, I would agree with Neil. And as you know, this whole property is one property, and all of the parking was evaluated. The previous board, as well as this board, while they did not grant the 20% reduction for the residential, they did for the commercial uses. So all of the parking that is required for the residential uses is installed or will be installed and does meet our ordinance.
You indicated today there were specific spaces that were reserved for these buildings over here, the ones you were talking about. Where are they? Why don't you just show where all those are?
If I could pull up that color-coded plan, I would, again. But the parking for this 44-unit apartment building, there's 45 spaces underneath. There's parking in front, and then along the side up here, where you can see them in the dark color.
But you said in your answer this afternoon, there were some reserved for the Claremont people also, where they're all designated.
So these parking spaces in the back here, which is eased parking, which was brought up earlier, I believe they are assigned per unit.
You are correct.
And then there's also the parking spaces in the front here, which is for these Claremont units. And then there's spaces over here, next to the Wellington condos, also.
Okay. In my understanding, Ms. Giordano, is that those spots that are now being reserved in the Wellington lot, that those, that was never contemplated to be used for Claremont residents before, because they were able to park essentially where this new building's being proposed. It's only now that it's being suggested that they park all the way over in Wellington.
I don't, again, I don't know that I would agree with that statement. I mean, I think, Mr. O'Keefe, I think by your, and frankly, I appreciate you sending the letter because it was very helpful, A, to be able to see your comments and a number of documents, including the 2007 conditional use approval and the 2011 conditional use approval. And I think as you yourself, I think, use the term and the future building E, I think that is something that we see throughout. There seems to be a contemplation that that is ultimately going to be developed, at least as my reading of the documents, and I know that reasonable people can disagree about that, and that's fine. But it does appear that there was a contemplation of that area being developed. And I think that's one of the reasons, and this is before my time, but in my understanding, and Tyra, you know, you can correct me, or Scott, that one of the reasons that they maintain the ability to potentially build a parking area if needed is because of the knowing, understanding that there was going to be expanded business and/or residential activity there, that there may be a need.
I would say that's correct, and there's also in the conditional use decision, if there does become a parking problem, that it be addressed, whether it be additional surface parking or the parking garage.
And I believe, and again, I could be wrong, I believe the easement, the parking that was protected by the easement was 100 spots?
You are correct.
And then there's of the total number, and I believe what was presently over in the that Claremont, that's going to be in the new building, I believe that's 40 spots? Is that what's in the, what's being moved from the building area over to the other area? Neil, how many spots are presently where the new building is going in?
How many parking spots? Ultimately, maybe 35-ish, 38, something like that. But here's, so really, what is restricted parking, or I'll say designated parking? It's the garage parking, right? It's parking that exists underneath the Wellington, it's the parking that exists underneath Meridian, parking that's going to exist underneath this building. Other than that, in reality, it is a shared parking field that is shared between all the different uses here. And from a number standpoint, we exceed the ordinance requirements for that. So that's the way I would, I would look at parking.
Anybody else on the planning mission? Or the public?
Okay.
Go ahead, Joe.
Okay. All right. Neil expressed that the review letters are extremely clean. The, actually, however, they don't appear to be so clean. McMahon Associates, on the January 3, 2020, report advised evaluating demand at 7 o'clock, parking demand. Instead, the traffic planning and the design company in their March 25 report used 5 o'clock instead of 7 o'clock. So McMahon said 7 o'clock, and traffic planning designed at 5 o'clock. Well, 5 o'clock in the center of Eagleview is not the same as 7 o'clock. It just seems odd that the advice of the consultant was of McMahon in January is to make it 7 o'clock. But when it was done, it was done at 5 o'clock. So we wonder, why are things like that happening? Well, that's one thing. The other aspect of the, in response to Neil's contention that the review letters are extremely clean, well, that's one aspect, it's not extremely clean. They didn't follow the advice of McMahon. And the other one, the other recommendation of McCann, McMahon, was, or their warning, or their concern was that the navigation problems presented by the garage entrance and exit was something to be concerned about. There's many competing movements. The garage ingress, egress, opposite parking spaces, inbound Wharton, and that there's competing movements to navigate. So they recommended changing the exit and entrance plan of the garage, because they recognize that there's a lot going on where the entrance and the exit, they're right next to each other, and right where people walk by, and dogs and cats, or well, not cats, but kids, and all that. So those are two recommendations made by McMahon. And so I don't actually see this as being a, as stated, being an extremely clean way regarding the consultants or engineers. The other, one other thing, I don't know whether I should wait for a response to that, or say another couple thoughts of mine. What do you suggest?
Well, I think this is a comment period. I think the board will take your comments, and if they have any responses, they'll.
All right. Well, the comment is that McMahon's recommendations were not followed, and that seems to be serious. They should be followed. They were ignored. And another aspect is that the statement was a little while ago that Wharton would be marked for a two-hour limit. My understanding from the February meeting, Supervisors meeting, is that Euclid doesn't have dedicated parking. There, it appeared that they're not all that crazy about getting dedicated parking, because it's going to be requested at various places in the township, and then the town, then the town's house to deal with that. So there is a great, as I saw, a reluctance to state that the spaces in Wharton would be dedicated. Now, the reason why this is important is that what doesn't seem to be said here is that the parking for this apartment is, there is there is only 14 spaces in front, the others are along the side of the suburban, and then up on top, up near, towards ACAC. It would be so much easier for the residents to park in Wharton. And then eventually, and also Granger City and Cricket, it's right outside their building. They didn't even have to walk up any steps from the lower level where the Town Center is, up to the first level where the apartments start, above the garages, above the garage. So naturally, people are going to want to park in Wharton. And I don't see how anybody can claim it's not going to happen. They will park there. And frankly, I doubt whether the township's going to put, make it dedicated. And even if they did, how is anybody going to enforce it? Somebody in the apartments decides to park there for a day, a week, a month, or whatever, second cars, how is anybody, how are the police going to know whether that belongs? Well, it's just, it's impractical to enforce it, as I'm told, because this also came up at the Supervisors meeting. So there's a danger here. Because this is also came up at the supervisors meeting. So we, there's a danger here, several dangers. This sounds so cut and dry, but it's not really. There's a lot of dangers here. One is there's danger to the live work units. If they lose their parking, they lose business and that's a big problem for them. And I haven't heard any valid plan for avoiding that, putting a two-hour limit on it. Doesn't seem to be really valid because it's not. It doesn't seem like it's going to be supported by Euclid Township. And if they are, then whoever else in Euclid wants to get dedicated parking, they should request it too, which I'm sure the township doesn't want. The other thing is that the, there's going to be forty-five spaces taken away by the construction of this building. And forty-five spaces are going to be gone for use, at least on the lower level, for use of the three restaurants. People are going to have to go up top. How many people are going to not feel it going up top? Nobody knows, but it is very reasonable to assume that not, that some people just won't want to bother. That as the parking now is nice and close, it's convenient. And if it goes up top, what will be the impact on the restaurants? I think we can assume it's going to be a negative impact. So that we have a couple of things here. One is that the restaurants are going to be harmed. The other is that the live work is going to be harmed. The parking for this apartment, you know, what seems to be glossed over here a little bit is there's forty-five spaces inside that garage. There's forty-four units. When, so when Neil says it's going to be one plus, well, yeah, one plus, one forty-fourth plus. It's, 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 for all intents and purposes, there's going to be one space per unit. And by saying it's going to be one plus, it almost sounds like it's going to be two plus. But the, once, anybody else, and there's only fourteen in front. So then they're going to have to go up alongside of suburban and up towards ACAC. That's a long distance. It's, I worked it out on Google. It's about seven hundred feet from that front door to the, you know, the driveway going to ACAC. And it seems like that might be too far for township ordinances. How far do you expect people to walk? Two thousand feet? There has to be a limit on how far a parking should be. The Claremont from the western building over to this proposed lot north of the Wellington, it's going to be eight hundred feet. I mean, come on, how, how? I don't want to be disrespectful. I don't mean to say that. But in essence, how, how far can we expect these people to walk? We're putting, we're not putting them, but it's proposed to put this building in a very tight little space there. There's no, there's very little parking. And it's going to displace all kinds of people, that the patrons for the restaurant, Wellington customers, the Claremont residents, and even the poor residents are going to be moving into this building and have to walk about five, six, seven hundred feet. It just seems that they, this is a building that shouldn't be where it's proposed to go. And again, as I stated and written about it a number of times, just stick it up at the corner of Wellington and, and Rice Boulevard. There's plenty of room there for it. It fits you, but a bigger building there. And just leave everybody alone with this thing. They're going to lose their, their open space. The, this little area for they walk their dogs, for kids to play. It's, it just seems cruel. There's so many people going to be hurt that it just seems that there has to be consideration given for all these different people, the, the live work, the restaurants, the patrons, the residents and all that. Claremont. So the, I know the people in townhouses are concerned about the lowering values for the houses because you're going to have a big fat building sitting there instead of a nice, open looking, open green space. The, the trees and everything in town center are going to be hidden from view. Everything's going to be bad. It's not, it's just, seems a terrible idea to put that there. It's going to hurt too many people. And, and I thought that Max's statements about the two thousand eleven were spot on. I'm looking at this decision back in two thousand eleven, Board of Supervisors. And it states that this parking lot for the forty spaces can be signed to restrict parking solely for the seventy-one units is going to be where this building is. And, and that's right across the driveway from the future building, as I'm reading, right from their decision, two thousand eleven. But also states in there that they're very worried about the parking. So now the park is still with a parking problem. A mess. It's just going to be awful for so many people and plus the loss of the pleasantries of the town center. And as far as the one last thing, and it's been mentioned by Neil a number of times, that they want to have the four sides with buildings around. Well, there are four sides with buildings around them. Only one of them is called Live Work. So you got four buildings and four sides. Live Works, one of them. It doesn't seem a valid need to stick another building in front of Live Work and call that the culmination of the plan from whatever back in the past. So I guess that's about it. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Neil, is there anything you want to add to that or Tara?
I believe you had a couple of things. I, I certainly, I, I respect Mr. Maron's opinions. They are, they're just that, his opinions and and certainly we have our opinions as far as what is good planning.
Well, that's not much of an answer, Neil.
I don't believe you, you asked really questions. I think you gave statements and answer a question. I'm happy to answer a question.
Neil and Mr. Moran, I'm just going to get that comments or questions be directed to the chairman.
All right. I'm sorry. Okay.
Hey, Dennis.
Yep.
I like to pipe in just for a short bit. Ted Giacomis on the township engineer and a couple of things that I want to make clear. I've been in the love with Euclid Township as their engineer for close to thirty-one years. Every plan that has come before the township or the town center, including the master plan, has always shown some sort of building being built where the forty-four units are being built that has never been shown as open space, nor is it required to be open space. Second thing that was said related to the McMahon review. I can tell you personally that Dean Kaiser from McMahon and myself got together, decided what it, what needed to be done at the entrance to the building for the vehicles under the building and the plan submitted abides by what we both had required. We make, we, as was discussed, the sweep will now be a stop. There is enough room now before there was not to actually have a car parked partially under the building while the doors go up before a car might have been sticking out. They've done everything both McMahon and myself had wanted at that entrance. Let's see what else. Oh. Parking, and I believe Tara spoke to this already. None of the boards have ever relaxed the requirement for the residential side of parking in the development. And parking for an apartment unit or, you know, the Wellington units, which are sales. Of course, Claremont is rental, has been, always been at two point five spaces per unit. Now, a lot of those units in the Claremont and even some in the new building will be one bedroom units. Yeah, there'll still be two people there, but I don't think they'll have the half car. So I, I read your, your note and I read, you know, what Max had written and you know, it's opinions has, has been said. And we, the engineers, we live by ordinances. We don't have the luxury of reading opinions. So anyway, with that, I just wanted to clarify a couple of things.
Ted, can I also just add that the land development plans were dated March twenty-seventh and they were reviewed by all the township consultants. We did receive review letters from all of them. And then the plans were again revised June ninth and sent out to the township consultants. And we did get clean review letters back. The January review letter that Mr. Moran was talking about was the conditional use plan review. These are the land development plan review.
All right. Thank you, Tara.
Dennis?
Yes?
I, I would just like to back up Ted in the fact that, you know, he said he's been a township engineer for thirty-one years. I've been on a planning commission for about thirty-five. Since day one, there was proposed to be a building in that space. You know, if people didn't want it there, they should have looked at the plans, I guess, when, when they were designed. But it's always been designed to be there. These town squares need enough people in them. Some town squares in various communities have gone broke or not had enough activity to keep them lively. And if the parking isn't there, then that will happen here. But, you know, the township has made allowances for a parking garage if necessary. That's already in agreement with the Hankin Group. And it, it's important for them to have what they need there. But this has been designed this way from day one. So you know, I think it has to go along with it. You can't really take the rights away from them.
Okay, thank you. And I appreciate someone that's been on a planning commission for a long time and Ted that's been around. They know, they know what's been going on for many years. And we appreciate their input.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, so what's in front of you tonight, what my request is in front of you is I am asking for both preliminary and final land development approval. I should say a recommendation to the Board of Supervisors for preliminary and final land development approval.
Okay. Well.
And of course, continuing of course upon any, any outstanding items that are in the review letters.
Correct. Well, motion that we nope, I call for a motion? If there's no other public comment?
Dennis, can I just also add that any motion made be contingent on the review letters from E.B. Walsh of June eighteenth, twenty twenty? McMahon Associates, June seventeenth, twenty twenty? The Hydra Terra letter dated June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty? Stan Stube dated June fifteenth, twenty twenty? And Mike Holmes, Fire Marshal of July first, twenty twenty?
Okay, Dennis?
Yes?
I'll make a motion then, based on all those, because I don't have the review, review letters in front of us. Based on all those letters that Tara just read off, that we grant preliminary and final approval for this, this site.
Motion?
Second?
I will second it.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All righty.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everyone, for attending.
We have to move to adjourn? Or you have some other business?
The, Tara, do you have the announcements? I know we have a Board of Supervisors meeting on Zoom that's next Monday.
Correct, at seven thirty. And then we have a zoning hearing board on the fifteenth, at seven o'clock PM via Zoom. And all of the links will be posted to the township website.
Okay, thank you for that.
I'll make a motion. We adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All righty. Thank you, everyone, for coming.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Good night.
Thanks. Good night.